of the Lake Mills City Council to order. Misty, will you please call the roll? Misty? Lisa?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quenow?
Here.
Mr. Koots?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Okay, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, we'll move on to election of council president. And so at this point, the opportunity for nominations is open.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Curler for council president.
Do you accept?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Greg Waters for council president.
I do not accept, but thank you for, uh, for the nomination.
Are there any other nominations? One more time, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we will proceed with a proceed with a roll call vote for the appointment of Lisa Curler as council president.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quenow?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Ms. Curler, city council president.
Thank you. I'll move over one seat. So I'm in the middle. Thank you, Mr. Waters and fellow council members. I appreciate the vote of confidence and it's an honor to serve as the president. So I guess I will run the rest of the meeting this evening. So our next agenda item is the election of council vice president. So the nominations are open and I would like to start out by nominating Mary Schmager for vice president. Do you accept?
I do, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice president? I'll ask one more time, are there any other nominations for vice president? Okay, so nominations are closed. So Lisa, would you please call the roll for the election of Mary Schmager as council vice president?
Ms. Quenow?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
And Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Ms. Schmager is city council vice president.
Thank you, everyone. And we'd also like to welcome our new council member, Greg Koots, to your first meeting. So glad you're joining us and I look forward to working with you.
Do you want to slide?
Yeah, I was gonna, if you guys want to slide over. Okay, we'll take just a moment here. So our next agenda item is council member board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. So we have the city council minutes from April 1st, Public Works Board from February 11th, and Lake Mills Housing Authority from January 28th. Are there any questions or comments on any of those meeting minutes? Or any board reports that anyone wants to share? Okay, seeing none, we will accept all of those reports. And next is our Joint Rock Lake Committee monthly report. And I see we have Pat Stevens here for that tonight. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the Lake Mills City Council. My name again is Pat Stevens. I'm here to give you a quick update on the Joint Rock Lake Committee. I currently serve as chair of that committee. First thing I just wanted to mention is we recently sent out an email to you all, just providing a little bit of background regarding the activities of the Joint Rock Lake Committee. That really started recognizing that we've got a totally new town board. And so we'd put together an email, kind of setting forth some of the same things that you have in your email, just relating to us being kind of a function of an ordinance and also our structure and some of the duties that we're actually charged with under that ordinance. So again, we thought we'd share that information with you. Again, we're here to help you. So we'd welcome any ideas that you have or issues that you think are kind of in the wheelhouse of the lake, to pursue those on your behalf, either as in regard to city and also issues, of course, in the town as well. So the second thing I wanted to mention is Lauren Egger, who's been an excellent member of the committee, has decided not to seek reappointment to the committee. Her term ends at the end of this month. So I wanted to make you aware that there will be another seat open for a city representative for you all to appoint. And I would also just also remind you that the town is also down one member with. So right now we have two members of the town, from the town, and one member from the city. Switching topics, I wanted to touch base on lake boats. You all have heard quite a bit about that, I believe. But the Joint Rock Lake Committee had, did a report and also came up with a recommendation to present to the town and the town decided to take up the issue of wake boats at their April 8th meeting. I did speak on behalf of the committee at that meeting. We had recommended that the town adopt an ordinance with a 30 feet depth requirement and a 700 feet setback requirement for operating in a wake boat mode. The town actually voted against adopting any ordinance and so that did not go forward at this time. So I think from our perspective, what we'll be shifting to, I expect, and we have to have some conversations about this, but what sort of education we can provide in regard to wake boating and try to maybe ramp up on that side of, that side of the issues. As an aside, I recently took a look in regard to state legislation. You might recall that last legislative session, there was a number of bills that were introduced. And at least last time I checked, about a week ago, I did not find any wake boat bills that had been reintroduced yet. Not to say that there won't be, tends to be the focus of the budget when the legislature gets started. And the other thing I wanted to just mention is that we had a representative from the Lake Mills Parks Committee join us at our last meeting, Mike Nessman. And they had raised an issue, that committee about concerns regarding Bartles Beach Swimming Area, in that area that's kind of just north of the beach and up to the boathouse and the motorboats that had been coming in there and using that area, you know, to maybe use the restrooms or whatever, to pull into that area. And so they had some concerns about that and we had a good discussion on that. And I know the city's looking at potentially moving one of the swimming lines out in that area to deal with that issue. But one of the other things that had been discussed is whether there should be a no swimming buoy kind of out in that area. And so that's something that we'll look on into, again, as suggested by the, by the Parks Committee. So with that, we're gonna continue to also try to educate on different issues associated with the lake. I know one of our members recently wrote an article on impervious services and impacts those have on, on potential lake water quality. So with that, that's all I had for you tonight and I wrap it up.
Quick question. Patrick, who's the, the chair of the committee at this point?
I'm sorry?
Who's the chair of the, the committee?
Of the committee, I'm the current chair.
You're the current chair?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Pam? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is correspondence, so I'll start with Greg W.
All right, correspondence. An email about an event that was held downtown this weekend. Proposal to change the, had another one that was about the proposal to change public comment, which we'll be discussing later on tonight. And an email that outlined the Linden Street Project, Madison Street Bike Lanes, and the tree protection measures that will also come up later on tonight in, in one of the construction projects.
Thank you. Michelle?
The only thing I have to add to that is that I received an email regarding youth climate lawsuit, but outside from that, that's the only other correspondence besides what Greg has mentioned.
Mary?
The only thing I had in addition was the update by the Rock Lake Improvement Association. And also I had one additional follow-up with Chris Lopez.
Okay, thank you. Greg K., did you have any correspondence or contact?
No, nothing, nothing new to add.
Okay, thank you. I had everything that others described. And I think we all also received a follow-up from our city manager on the housing breakdown in response to a question that Mary had asked at the last meeting. And I got an invitation to the Jefferson County Legislative, Legislative Breakfast. So I think those are the only other things that have not already been mentioned. Okay, so we'll move on to our questions and public comment. And I believe a few people have already registered. So the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Comments may also be made about items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign and sheet provided. And if there is anyone attending online who wants to speak, please type your name and address in the chat feature and then the clerk will be able to identify you. So let's start in the room. Please make your way to the podium, anyone that would like to speak tonight.
My name is Jacob Arndt and I'm at 527 Mulberry Street. That's my residence. Just, just to make, to keep this within my three minutes, I have a comment on, on two items of Resolution 2526. And one of them is a tree protection voted, that was reject, the tree protect, protection was rejected by Public Works on the basis of a $50 per linear foot extra charge for tree protect, tree protection. Now that's, if you multiply that by fif, by a thousand feet, which is basically a city block, that's $50,000. So the contractor, I'm pretty sure you can pound him down on that if you, if you really wanted to and we could keep tree protection. $50,000 extra for tree, for tree protection per block is, is really running away with the, with the estimates. Yeah, it's sort of common sense. For, as a contractor for 40 years, you can pound that guy down and, and get your tree protection as well. We need tree protection for shade and the rest of the climate changes and all the rest of it. Now to quickly move on, so I don't go past my three minutes, Linden Street Public Works estimate came in at $237,000 for 120 feet, trenching one line for sewer line, 120 feet, and another line for water lines, 120 feet, probably a catch basin, and then a, and a fire hydrant, $237,000. Also, that figure includes $79,000 assessment for the residents on Linden Street, which is basically a third to a half of the value of their single family home. So the city managers have effectively put residents on Linden Street out of their home for the simple process of signing up for, for annexation. That's kind of what we're looking at. Now what city would manage in that way, puts you guys on the, on the hook for having to explain how you put a few homeowners out of their prop, out of their homes, seniors, for signing up for annexation? That, that kind of management, I think these guys are working for you guys and ultimately they're working for us. That kind of management is putting, you know, basically, they're, they're putting their hat in their hand and listening to contractors, basically Public Works contractors, and not really questioning them. That kind of thing, as a taxpayer of five houses, five properties in town here, I would rather have somebody with a little bit more street savvy on how to deal with these contractors. So before I get a little bit more worked up on it, I'll just end that, okay? Let's get some savvy on dealing with these contractors.
Thank you, Mr. Arndt.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight?
Hello. I know that, oh, well.
Can you give us your name and address, please? Thanks.
Yep, my name is Jill Deluna. I live at W. 7866 County Road B in Lake Mills. Okay, I am here to speak on the agenda item 11C about redoing the rules of procedures for the meetings. Now I did read it and it was unclear. I know we're not allowed to ask questions, so I'm just gonna go ahead because I cannot find clarification of the word residents. If it means city, only city township included, it's not clear. So just in case, it means only city residents. I think that would be very unfair to not allow the township people of Lake Mills to be able to speak at the meetings if we're only including the city people. I mean, the township residents, they do a lot to support the city. It's really not a good way to segregate all the Lake Mills in a whole setting, to have separate rules for township and city. I understand there's separate rules, but to not to allow township people to speak at the meetings, that's segregation. We have a lot to do with the city also. So I'm hoping I'm reading it wrong. I'm hoping it's not just referring to the city people. If it is, that would be really a lot like saying our schoolchildren should be treated different if they come from the township. Their opinions don't matter. Lake Mills is everybody within the zip code, within Lake Mills. It's not township, it's not city. We should all have something to say. Now, I'm not understanding why these rules should be amended, seeing as how in the last four months, you've only had a total of 21 speakers altogether that have come up here in four months. So it's not like anybody's bombarding you guys with all of their comments. The only township people that have spoke was during one meeting and there was nine of them. And that is because the subject of that meeting was a great personal concern to the township people and would have a direct effect on their life. So I'm hoping I'm reading it wrong. I'm hoping you're not referring to only letting city residents speak at your meetings I think it would be wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else who'd like to speak during public comment tonight?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Anita Martin. We live at 261 Pinnacle Drive in the city of Lake Mills. My comments pertain to Ordinance 1274, proposed amendments and changes to meetings, rules, and procedures for city meetings. A few comments, and I did go ahead and email the city council members regarding my points, but a few comments that I'd like to make. Some of the proposed changes include the timeframe for resolutions or ordinances to be brought to these, to be filed with the city clerk. Instead of six working days, it's proposed to be changed to four days. That's not a very long period of time and that could also include weekends. So please consider maybe making that three working days. That would allow enough time or more time for council members to review things, for staff and for residents. The language includes a comment about city business. Perhaps that needs to be clarified, what exactly is considered city business? The proposal is to limit total public comment period to 30 minutes at the regular monthly meetings. Most of the time when I've been, and I've been to quite a few over the last couple of years, it has not exceeded 30 minutes. Most of the meetings are less. So the rationale for including that, all these little flashings, is, it's a little unclear to me. Another thing that's proposed as a change is changing the time notification requirement for special meetings to go, instead of requiring six hours to do two hours. That's a very short period of time unless it's an emergency situation. It's short for staff, it's short for the city council members to make provisions for their work and for their family. It's very difficult then also for residents when there's only two hours. So I think that's just not a good timeframe unless it's an absolute emergency situation. The commentary in there about, it specifies that there will be a public comment period for the regular monthly meetings for city residents and taxpayers. That's the way I believe it's worded, which is a little vague because, you know, town people pay taxes too. This to me is not a good idea. We have a beautiful asset, Rock Lake. It is a shared asset between the town and the city. It's also an asset that numerous people in the county use. We have events where without the participation of the town residents, they would not be nearly as fiscally or community-wide success. I mean, we really rely in our, in our community on town residents and what they do to enhance our community as much as we rely on city residents. And we don't live, you know, in, on an island in the city. We are a full community, so to specify that and then later say, well, if, basically it says essentially if the time allows, the presiding officer can allow other people to speak. Now, other people may not even be just town residents. It may be other people that are former residents that have expertise or people from different communities that have knowledge or interest in a subject that would just like to weigh in. So by having that opportunity, it really enriches the information you all have as elected officials and it also helps educate the public. I could say more, but I know I have to watch the time. Thank you.
It's past three minutes. Thank you, Anita.
Quick question. Mrs. Martin, I did not get that memo. Could you forward me that memo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Same with me.
I'm sorry?
I did not get it either.
Really? To your, um, your city's email, but I'll say this again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Brandy Brozkowski Duro, 204 West Lake Park Place, Lake Mills. So I have actually two comments. I'm on, one is an item on the agenda tonight, but the other one is a comment that I wanted to address the city council. So I didn't know if I can speak on both, if I get time for both because there are two separate issues.
Sure, if you've got three minutes, if you can fit it all in three minutes, that'd be great.
Oh, I see. Okay, well, then I will speak fast. The first one is I want to encourage the city council to make sure that our city manager, city building inspector, and city attorney are making sure that all of our shoreline protection ordinances are actually enforced, in particular 660-3 on vision and access corridors and peer access, making sure that these walkways and pathways are within the vision access corridor for the protection of our shoreline and the shore land. Very important. So my other comment now is about the 1274 ordinance. Here are the questions I have that I just, I don't see the need for changing this. Yes, I know that it stems from the lengthy couple hour public comment section, session that we had about the annexation of land and development of land. That is very uncommon that you're going to have meetings like that, but I think as a city council, that when there is a need for dialogics to go on, when city members who have a right, not granted an opportunity, but an actual right to speak, I don't like the language changing that to opportunity instead of a right, a citizen's right to speak. On occasion, a meeting will go longer because that happens, but in general, if that's once a year, that would be unusual. And I think that to have the upper, the, the city to come together to be able to speak in a public forum like this is very important and not to limit it to 30 minutes. The other nitpicky thing I have about your changes, changing it to yays and nos, N-O-S, that's really not even an English word, but to, why aren't you changing it to yeses and nos? But to leave ayes and nos, I would keep it as ayes and nays. That seems very different, peculiar to me to see that written, any type of ordinance for our city. And then another one is to think about, if you're on the city council, then that's the role you take on to hear people's comments coming in. And I think I can agree with three minutes, limiting it to three, but not to limit the sum total of public comments to 30 minutes, especially when there are pressing issues going forward about development in the city or it could be any other type of big issue that all of a sudden, you know, comes about, that people want to have adequate time to be able to speak to the council and not to say after the 30 minute thing is the rest of the 20 people that want to speak, you can't speak. I don't feel that that's a very welcoming atmosphere to have for our city and to say other municipalities have passed things like that. We are not other municipalities. We're a small city of Lake Mills and I say to leave the ordinance as it sits already and not make the changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment tonight? I see a few people have joined us online. Is there anyone that registered to or expressed an interest in speaking?
We do have one registered to speak, Nikki Engler.
Great, go ahead, Nikki.
Hi there. Thank you for taking my, my, my call in here online as I'm not able to be there in person today. I would like to jump on and add to what Anita and Brandy had just also expressed their concerns about with the change in the language for the public hearing part of the meetings. Just as a reminder, not everyone may be able to send emails or make phone calls. And I know that the city council has expressed their desire to be, to have public input and to have people participating in our local government. I've been participating in, in the local government at times over the last several years and I know every time that I am there or my family is there, someone from the city council does make the comment that they are happy to see the engagement from the local community. And I would like to just remind you that shutting out the local community at the public hearing time of it, of the meetings, would be actually going against what the city council has already expressed. So shutting out the public community, whether it's from the city or from the township or from outside of that, could be very detrimental to the participation of the city council, I'm sorry, the city people at large. So I do not think this is beneficial to what, over the years, the city council has said and expressed that they appreciate having the engagement from the city. And also as someone who has spoken on behalf of someone who lives in another town, there may be family members whose family lives in that city, but they do not live in that city, but they need someone to speak on their behalf. So that would also be another group of people who may need someone to speak for them because they can't speak. they can't speak themselves, if that makes sense. So, that would be cutting out those people as well. The language as written is fine and I would like to go on the record stating that I urge you to not adopt any changes at all. That's, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item then, and that is the city manager's report.
There are a number of financial documents included in your report as well as reports from each of the three public safety entities, fire, police, and EMS. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions on any of the reports or for the city manager? Greg.
I just have one. I noticed that on the accounts payable summary, or not the summary, but the register, maybe it was on the summary, anyway, it listed that union dues were, were not listed or at least the dollar amount wasn't listed. Just wondering what the reason was for that.
Union dues check. It would also be in the check register.
So, it's, it's not city funds. It's, um, it's coming.
It's individual funds?
Right.
Okay. I can talk to Sam about that separately. Thank you.
So, just to verify, you're saying it's not listed because it's not city dollars? So, it's not part of the city's expenditures. It's coming out of employees' paychecks?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Mary?
I'm just interested in our strategic priority topics and any updates on wastewater treatment plant or the Sandy Beach next steps that we had discussed a few weeks ago on the action that we were working on for that.
Yep. So, we've executed a, a facility planning task order with Strand and so that's actively being worked on. And then for Sandy Beach, we have, we've had an initial meeting on the topic. We did, we put together an updated concept plan that the Parks Board saw at their meeting last night and then we will be sitting down with our contracted engineers to establish, yet this week, to establish a more firm timeline and I guess order of operations on what we're recommending as far as the parking lot and infrastructure improvements that the city council has chosen to prioritize. And so, we'll be bringing that, after we firm up that timeline, I'll have a better update for you in, in that regard, but that's where we're at right now is setting order of operations for what work should be done when, as well as what notice requirements are necessary that we need to work around. And then we can come back with a, with a better update on when you'll be seeing some recommendations on how to move forward.
Will that also include, if I recall, the financial kind of outlay?
Yep. Opinion of probable cost. Yes.
Okay. Can I ask him one more?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. Greg has his hand up.
Greg.
I was just going to pile on with the library being passed at the last election. What would be the, the next steps, I guess, there? That's something we could talk about at the end of the meeting as well, but since we kind of reached this topic, I thought I would throw the library out there as well.
Sure. Excuse me. So, we have, the library board is continuing their fundraising efforts. So, they've privately raised about $750,000 to date and they are, they're gonna, they plan to ramp up those efforts now that the referendum has passed as well as continue conversations with the Greater Watertown Health Foundation as well for potential support. We do have CIP coming up here shortly and so that'll be incorporated into it for the city council to make a firm, a firmer commitment. Right now, that was, it was, I, you proceeded to referendum but have not actually encumbered any funds through council action. And so, we will be, we're still kind of waiting to hear from the library board on what year they're expecting to begin construction so that we can strategize as to where we would need to put those, those borrowed funds into which year in the capital improvement plan, but I imagine that'll be a significant topic of conversation during the capital improvement plan process that we'll have in the, in the summer.
Thank you.
Mary, did you have a, another question?
Yes, I have another question and this actually might be more for Dan, but I'm curious if there is any onboarding and training plan for Greg, if there would be any topics that might be of interest for those of us who might need a refresher or a new learning topic that we haven't kind of had. So, I'd be interested in knowing more about that.
I have been working on a council member orientation packet that we haven't had in the past to hopefully share and then was planning to reach out to Greg to schedule a time that would work for him to come in and meet with myself as well as various city department heads, if other council members would like to have an opportunity to discuss those items as well. Certainly be happy to facilitate that, but I have been working on an orientation packet, putting the finishing touches on it, just touching on kind of the, I guess, the nuts and bolts of, of council membership, open meetings laws, open records laws, things, things like that, points of contact for certain questions and just putting together a few pages that would hopefully be helpful and consumable. So, yes, but this'll kind of be the first run at it.
Okay.
Can I step in also?
Sure.
And Drake, I apologize. I don't know if you know this, but Wisconsin League of Municipalities also puts on like a council member 101 workshop or Zoom. It's now Zoom. It used to be in-person, but now they do it via Zoom that you could also sign up for.
Great. Okay. And I, just back to the, the first strategic item, the wastewater treatment plan. As I recall, if I'm remembering the dates right, we were expecting to get something back from Strand somewhere around September. Does that sound about right? So, I, I'm, I don't know if there would be anything in the interim between that, but I think that that was a deadline date for them to bring something back to us if I remember right.
Sure. I'll touch base with them and make sure we're still on target for that timeframe.
Okay. Great. That sounds great. Any other questions for the city manager this evening? Okay. Thank you. So, then we'll move on to council business and our first item is Resolution 25-20. Lisa, would you read that title for us?
Resolution 25-20 Designating Public Depositories.
I move to approve City Council Resolution 25-20.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Ms. Quednow. Staff?
It's an annual approval that is, is required for our financial operations.
Are there any questions from council members? Okay. Seeing none, can we have a roll call, please, on Resolution 25-20, which is designating public depositories?
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 25-21. Lisa, would you read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 25-21 Designating Official Newspaper.
I move to approve City Council Resolution 25-21 Designating Official Newspaper.
Second. So, we have a motion by Ms. Quednow, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Anything from staff?
This is a requirement annually to designate the official newspaper. We do have a newspaper that is produced within the city limits, which previously was known as the Lake Mills Leader and is now a combination newspaper, but it is still produced within the city limits and so that is our, that is who we have traditionally designated as the official newspaper.
Okay. Any questions for discussion? Okay. Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 25-21 Official Newspaper?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is ordinance 1274 and this is the first reading. So, Lisa, would you please do the first reading for us this evening?
City of Lake Mills City Council Ordinance 1274 Amending City Code Chapter 38, City Council Section 38-3 Meeting Rules of Procedure.
Thank you. So, that was the first reading this evening. I'm the sponsor of this ordinance and because we have a long agenda tonight, I was going to keep my comments brief for tonight, but there were a number of public comments. So, I thought maybe I would just give a, a general overview of, of what's in this proposal and then I'd be happy to take questions and certainly we have our second reading and third readings, you know, that will be coming up. So, this started out as a ongoing conversations that I was having primarily with Misty Quest and things seeing that, that I was seeing that the clerk was doing to try to make our meetings more efficient and, and operate smoothly on, at our regular council meetings. And so, she and I got to talking and there was a number of things that you've probably noticed that she's introduced over the last couple of years, including a kind of an increased use of consent agendas and a simpler way for how we accept our meeting minutes, other things like that. And so, I was asking her if she had other ideas and then she also took the initiative to kind of poll other communities, other clerks that she works with. And I started looking at ordinances for other communities in our county and nearby just to see how they operate their meetings and again, just always with an eye toward efficiency. We, some of our meetings are pretty quick and then we've had some marathon ones that have been over three hours. So, that's really where these conversations started. And as I started looking at ordinances from other communities, one of the things that I did see is a significant difference in how public comment is handled at different communities. And so, that kind of intrigued me as well. And one thing I found very surprising is that state statutes that govern how city councils operate says that city council, it indicates things that we must do and then it says that we may allow public comment. So, that's discretionary, which that kind of surprised me because I just assumed that, you know, of course, there would always be public comment. And I found a community that actually doesn't do, doesn't have a public comment as a regular agenda item. And I was talking to a constituent of ours earlier today who said that she moved here about a year and a half ago from another community within Jefferson County that didn't have public comment as part of their agenda. So, that really got me thinking that I, I looked at that part of our ordinance and I wanted to assure people, the reason that I'm proposing some changes to the public comment section are to reinforce that we do want to hear from our residents, that we do want to hear from taxpayers in our city and that that will be an agenda item. So, sort of making an affirmative statement that that will be an agenda item for every regular meeting, that we will have an opportunity for city residents and taxpayers. There's other elements with, within the public comment that I've also am proposing and certainly would be happy to discuss, you know, as time goes on, again, with a goal of just having our meetings operate smoothly, be efficient and having everybody know, you know, kind of how things work. So, definitely not any intention to limit public comment, but rather to make sure that our, our residents and the people who have elected us definitely know that they will always have an opportunity to speak at every meeting. I think, again, in the interest of time, I could go through some of the other provisions and indicate the reasons why I'm proposing those changes, but maybe if people are okay with that, we could have that as a, as a discussion at the next meeting after second reading. A number of the changes that I'm proposing are really just how we're currently, how we've been doing it. And as it turns out, our ordinance doesn't read quite the same as our current practice and so some of it is just trying to kind of align those. Some of the shorter notice requirements, as that was brought up by a couple of people, that's actually consistent with state statutes, the, and the shorter notice to the two hours. That's really to allow for emergencies, not, not at all intended to be that we're gonna, you know, do, do business without due notice, but if there's some kind of an emergency reason that the council needs to get together, the state statutes provides two hours. And so, that was the suggestion from our city clerk and attorney that maybe we be consistent with that. So, a couple of things that are in here are for consistency with statutes or consistency with how we're kind of already doing business. One other thing maybe I'll add and then be happy to hear any questions tonight. In my memo, two things I'll add. In my memo, I listed some other things I found that are other examples of things that other communities do with public comment that I did not include, but if anybody wants to talk about those, we certainly could. And also, there's a section in our current code, it's 38-30, that allows us to suspend the rules at any time. So, if there's, you know, consent of a majority of the council, we, and, and we see that there's a lot of people that want to speak on an issue, we can extend the time, for example. So, there's always the opportunity to allow more time or suspend any of the rules on how we operate our meetings if a majority want to do that in any given meeting. So, again, I was hoping to be a little shorter, but I thought just because of some of the public comment, I wanted to just frame some of the reason that I'm bringing this forward. And again, we'll have second and third readings coming up, but I'd be open to any questions or discussion that people would like to have this evening.
So, I have a question. If I have some perspectives regarding an interest in something that is not either clear for me or I would propose something maybe modified, is this a good time to start talking about that or is that when we get to the final reading and we actually then propose like amend language? Like what, how does this, help me understand the best practice on moving from here to the third reading with sharing my, my viewpoints?
Well, I'll state what I, how I think it works, but I think we don't formally amend an ordinance until we get to the third reading and then somebody moves to adopt it and then that would be the formal amendment. But I believe, Drake and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, we can discuss them during any of the readings. So, if you wanted to bring an idea forward or, you know, discuss something or ask a question, we can do that at any of the readings. Is that?
Yeah, correct. There is no, our ordinance requires three readings of proposed amendments of ordinance or changes to ordinance of any, of any kind. I do not believe a member would be precluded from making an amendment tonight. In practice, the city council has not made changes to a proposed ordinance until the third reading, but I don't believe that a member would be prohibited from making a motion tonight to amend.
Okay. Great. Thanks. So, with that, Mary, do you have some comments?
Well, I, I do. I was, as I was looking at trying to rationalize the evidence that supported some of the changes and it's interesting because someone was doing some math, one of our public folks from public comment. This hasn't been, some of the changes with the limitation on the 30 minutes and the, specifically also looking at city residents versus town, over the course of the last three or four years, I, I calculated all the statistics, this hasn't been an issue. We've only had three meetings in the course of the last four years where we've had more than 10 folks. And one of them was the Wangard one recently. We had a water level which was half and half, town and city, and another was a random, a whole bunch of different ones, and it was six city, three town, and one RLIA person. So, we haven't had an issue and so, you know, and in the lens of looking at citizens of, you know, like we're representing the citizens, I, I'm feeling a bit restricted with some of the new suggestions. And one that's, a few of them are particularly bothering me, but one of them in particular is the definition around city residents and taxpayers being more restrictive in the way it's worded. And I feel it is in direct conflict with one of Drake's performance assessment criteria, which is specifically mentions community and resident engagement and the need for him to seek stakeholder input, intentionally putting, putting him in a situation where I feel like some of the- Well, I do. I was, as I was looking at trying to rationalize the evidence that supported some of the changes, and it's interesting, because someone was doing some math, one of our public folks from public comment, this hasn't been, some of the changes with the limitation on the 30 minutes and the specifically also looking at city residents versus town, over the course of the last three or four years, I calculated all the statistics, this hasn't been an issue. We've only had three meetings in the course of the last four years, where we've had more than 10 folks. And one of them was the Wangard one recently, we had a water level which was half and half, town and city, and another was a random, whole bunch of different ones, and it was six city, three town, and one RLIA person. So we haven't had an issue. And so, you know, and in the lens of looking at citizens of, you know, like representing the citizens, I, I'm feeling a bit restricted with some of the new suggestions. And one, that's, a few of them are particularly bothering me, but one of them in particular is the definition around city residents and taxpayers being more restrictive in the way it's worded. And I feel it is in direct conflict with one of Drake's performance assessment criteria, which is specifically mentions community and resident engagement, and the need for him to seek stakeholder input, intentionally putting, putting him in a situation where I feel like some of the, like narrowing perhaps the commentary on a broader scale to more restrictive to city, is in direct conflict with that particular element of his performance. And so just an observation regarding my perspective. And I, I, I won't approach, I have some suggested, I would say suggested language that I think would be of interest to consider, to address that might get at some of the same concerns. I, I do know that I'm, I'm expecting that the planning commission meeting with a very large number of township residents, and it was very long, and a lot of them are redundant, and, you know, I think there are ways to get to the same means without actually putting in strict rules. It's kind of my initial thought on thinking about, and this is primarily the public comment area. I can support, like a lot of the other recommendations I feel are, like the four days, and that's kind of what we've been working on anyway. We post on Friday. I mean, some of these things to me were super easy, but the public comment to me was the area where I feel like there are inconsistencies in alignment with Drake's performance, and the, just the data not supporting kind of how his past practices really happened for us is kind of where I'm at. So I'm kind of still, I will be looking for, possibly working on, just some modifications to get to the same ends.
Great, thanks. Does anybody else have any discussion or comments or questions for tonight?
I guess I just wanted to clarify that the third reading, if we stay on schedule, will be the second meeting in May, just to clarify that.
Yes, I think that would be right. Yeah, assuming that we don't advance it more quickly, yes. Michelle?
First of all, well, looking at Meetings 1A, where it says the city council should be held on the first and third Tuesdays every month, I noticed that at 7:00 PM was stricken. Are we considering moving that time, or are we wanting to have more flexibility?
Yeah, so this was actually a suggestion from staff, and I did notice it in some other ordinances, where instead of having the time, the precise time of the meeting listed in the ordinance, some other ordinances will just say at a time to be determined by the council. And you might recall, we did, we recently updated our ordinance for the Parks Board, because their precise day of the week and time of meeting was in the ordinance, and when they wanted to try to change what night so that they could meet in this room, they weren't able to without an ordinance change. So this just, like, to use your word, would give flexibility, would allow the council to, you know, from time to time, do it different. If we wanted to change all council meetings to start at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM, it would give us the ability to do that. So that's kind of where that idea came from. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks. Any other questions or comments for this evening?
Yeah, the, the public, the public comment section, is that, it, the name of it changed. Is this for public comment at all meetings, or only city council meetings?
The way that it's written in this, this part of the city's ordinance just governs city council meetings. So, and that was one of the things I noted in my memo, there are some other municipalities, like Jefferson County, for example, as a county, they have an ordinance and then a manual that says how all their public comment periods will be run for every committee and every county board meeting. So they kind of standardize it across all. This ordinance would just apply to council meetings, and so, you know, if that was an interest we could talk about, do we want to have a consistent way of running public comment at all of our boards and committees as well? But the short answer to your question is this would just apply to council meetings.
Okay, I, I wouldn't, I need to, I looked at the changes. I didn't look at the whole thing in context, but by changing the title from addressing the council to public comment, it could be that you're changing what it covers. Again, I would need to look at that in the larger context of where it lies in the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good to think about. Yeah, that, that wouldn't be the intention, and I think the phrase "public comment" is then, is also the term that's used on the agenda that would, that would go with it.
That, that does make sense, yeah.
Any other questions or comments this evening? Okay, thank you, everyone. So then we will have Ordinance 1274 on our next meeting for a second reading. Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution 25-22. Lisa, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-22, authorizing the city manager to submit a simplified water rate case to the Public Service Commission.
Would anyone like to make a motion, or would you like to hear from staff first?
Staff would be great.
Okay, let's get a staff overview first, please.
Sure. So as, as you may be aware, the water utility is regulated by the Public Service Commission. So the Public Service Commission is actually the entity that sets the rates for the utility. From time to time, we submit rate cases to the Public Service Commission, essentially making a case for why the rate structure should change, rate structure or rate amount should change. Uniquely, this is unique to water utilities, in that the Public Service Commission allows for what's called a simplified rate case. This is a very simple process that does not involve the time and expense of a full rate case that is required, and if you meet certain eligibility requirements set by the PSC, you can increase your rates by what is essentially a rate of inflation. The rate of inflation, their simplified rate case increase has been set at 3%. There is a memo included in your packet from our financial advisor, Ellers, that shows what that would do to the typical monthly bill of different users. The Public Works Board did recommend approval. These simplified rate cases allow the utility to keep up with increasing costs due to inflation and avoid steep spikes when a full rate case becomes necessary. And so it avoids you getting into a situation, hopefully, where you have a year where you need an 18% increase or a 25% increase, which, you know, we, I have personally, I've seen before in other communities that I've, I've worked in. And so it, it allows for us a, a, a more manageable increase over time for what those rates become each year, and when you do need a full rate case, it hopefully mitigates the amount that the full rate case needs to do above and beyond what simplifies have provided.
Are there any questions or discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I will move approval of City Council Resolution 25-22, authorizing the city manager to submit a simplified water rate case to the Public Service Commission.
Second?
So we have a motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Mr. Waters. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote please on Resolution 25-22, authorizing a simplified water rate case?
Ms. Curler.
Aye.
Ms. Schmager.
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow.
Aye.
Mr. Koots.
Aye.
Mr. Waters.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Resolution 25-23. Lisa, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-23, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance contract LM 1-25.
I move to approve City Council Resolution 25-23 as written.
Second?
So we have a motion by Ms. Quinnow, and a second by Ms. Schmager. And I see we have a presentation on this?
Dave, do you have the presentation from the Public Works Board?
No.
It's on the agenda. It's the street maintenance presentation that's listed on the agenda.
Under, under letter E. Looks like we've got it.
So in the meantime, I'll, I'll start. I provided this information at the last meeting, at the Public Works Board meeting. We actually talked about what was going to be in this bid at our February 18th council meeting. It's, in that meeting, we talked about the map and where we were going to do mill and overlay, and oh, by the way, I know we're on the concrete item, but the presentation is really comprehensive. It's the concrete, it's the chip seal, and it's that pavement. So I'm going to talk about all three, and then we'll summarize that in kind of the budget, how it fits into the budget. So if you don't mind, I'll do one presentation for all three. Following that February 18th council meeting, we moved to bid on March 20th for each of these three contracts. In the first contract that we're discussing is the Schwager Concrete Contract. It was the concrete contract. Our pre-bid estimate was $78,000, so opinion of probable construction cost. That was based on last year's low bid with a 3% inflation rate over that one-year period. The $78,000 opinion, the low bid by Schwager Concrete came in at $83,000, 208.50.
No.
That's Milton Street. It's under E.
It's under Agenda Item E, Street Maintenance Presentation. Okay. Thanks.
I can continue.
Yeah, okay, great.
The bid process went through our, our normal bid process, including advertisement for two weeks in the newspaper. We send out, as, as the Public Works Department sends out notices to companies that have bid in the past with us. So we're trying to reach out to contractors for these bids. In this case, Dave, that was it. We could slide down about three or four slides. We'll be all set to go. All right. So the bid tab is provided in the presentation, in the packet. We will note that concrete contractor history, over the last 10 years, Schwager Concrete has won the maintenance program for concrete in all but two of the last 10 years. So they have been a great company to work with. They typically win this typically, and I said this at the Public Works Board meeting, a lot of times they win this based on the mobilization. They're a local in Johnson Creek. They're able to minimize their mobilization costs and use actually some of the maintenance work that we do in the city that isn't in big bulk pieces, but rather spread out over the city in smaller pieces. And they're able to use that for their staff, say, on a Friday, when they're trying to keep their staff in the community. So a lot of times that is the reason why, at least that I'm seeing through the bid process, why they're winning the contract on a regular basis. Again, in the last several years, JB Johnson has been another bidder, and you'll notice that they were one of the two bids on the concrete bid. And you can see on the bid tab, our opinion of cost and the two bidders for the total. I do want to point out two items that I added to the contract this year, and I want to be clear that they don't impact if we decide, if the council decides not to use this. It doesn't impact the bid. It would just be an item we would not use, and that is the tree protection line items for sidewalk and curb and gutter. And so what I tried to do with this, because the council was looking at a pilot, we were unsure whether that included the maintenance program. So what I tried to do was include two items that were built in more of a surcharge, so that if we needed, and in case, many cases, staff does the prep work. But occasionally, we asked our concrete contractor, because of staff time, to do excavations and preparation work. In those cases, then, if a tree is encountered, and the arborist is, is stating that we want to protect that, and that is the desire, if that's the desire of the council, then we will implement that next item and add it to the contract. So for example, what, next, two slides down, Dave? Thank, one more, please. Thank you. So here's an analysis of that curb and gutter maintenance repair with the tree protection specifications, and how does that impact the bid? The bid items, number seven is a $7 charge, provides for an additional pay item for if a tree is encountered during the curb and gutter maintenance removal. These sites will be removed, or will be reviewed by the arborist. If you're comparing that to the base bid for the same type of work in bid item number two for 30, 30-inch curb and gutter, and bid item number five for 24-inch curb and gutter, which range from 63 to 66, if we would implement the tree protection, those prices would, would jump to 73 and $70. So the monetary impact on tree specifications in the curb and gutter section of the maintenance program is about an 11% increase. Next slide, Dave. Same analysis, this time with the sidewalk. Now sidewalk typically, some of the reasons why we're doing sidewalk maintenance, many times, is because of tree roots, lifting the sidewalk and creating a trip hazard. We, we apply the same type of item. This is bid item 14. It's $5 a square foot in this case, so it adds to the base bid item number nine and number 11, which is 1325 and 1390 per square foot. So that addition, when you look at a monetary impact, is a 36 to 38% increase. Next slide, Dave. So let's talk a little bit about the sidewalk pros and cons for the, for the tree protection specification impact on the maintenance program. Obviously, the pro is we're protecting the trees, we're protecting the roots. Some of the cons that I have seen are, is, as I stated earlier, majority of sidewalk maintenance is required because of the tree roots. In addition to the increased cost, longer sidewalks have to be replaced. So typically, if you've got a root that's popping a sidewalk up, if you remove the root, and you can lay that back flat, you're probably only removing a couple of stones of sidewalk, stones being a four-by-four piece. If, if we have to keep that root there, we really need to pick up part of the sidewalk at a longer length to transition, so that we don't create a trip hazard somewhere else. So there's a longer piece of sidewalk that gets replaced. The next concern I have is the drainage issues around that. If you're raising the sidewalk in a stretch where the street is draining just ever so slightly in the direction of the tree, and now you're picking that piece up, you're actually creating a depression in between that may not drain properly. So we have to be very careful of that in the future. Last point is, those roots, if we leave them there, they will continue to grow, and it is very likely that we will be back to have future maintenance on the sidewalk because of future trip hazards.
The only thing I'll jump in here is, it's not necessarily at all times and all or nothing. So let's assume that the city council proceeds with incorporating the tree protection standards and, and directs staff to exercise that option on the contract when and where appropriate. It still involves the arborist, the city forester analyzing that tree. Different roots are, have different levels of importance, right? So there, there are, there are procedures for removing roots if that will not damage the law, potential, the, I'm trying to blank on the word, essentially, the likelihood that the tree survives after that tree is removed. So there may be roots that, following certain procedures, maximize the chance that that tree will survive. On the flip side, an arborist could make the determination that this is going to continue to be an issue. This type of tree, and I'm not an arborist, so I can't speak to what they are. This type of tree is notorious for, for roots that are going to cause sidewalk heaves. It likely should not have been the tree that was planted in this location because of the size of the terrace, proximity to the sidewalk, and the issues it's, it's occurred, and makes the determination. the determination that for safety reasons, they have an obligation to remove that tree because of the continuous hazard that they believe it will present after analyzing the situation. So there is still discretion built into that, the forester and arborist position, to make a determination on what procedures should be implemented. Can the root be removed that would alleviate our concerns? Would removing that root cause the death of the tree? Will the hazard continue to arise each and every year? All of those things that the arborist is, is going to be considering when working with our contractor or with Public Works staff to determine that. Director Schreiner is here. If you have questions specifically of him about how that analysis kind of works and what process they go through, but I just want to, I wanted to reiterate that if the council directs us to do tree protection standards, we will do everything that is, is, is reasonable and possible to implement those and preserve that tree, but that does not mean that the foresters and the arborists will sacrifice safety or, or not follow through with their obligation to mitigate hazards that exist or will continue to exist.
I know you have, Duane, that you have three different items in your presentation, but I think it would be helpful if we could discuss this one, since we've got a motion, and go ahead and do the vote on this one before you go on, if that's okay. So do people have any questions about the sidewalk and curb and gutter maintenance contract?
I have a question.
Mary.
I have a question. We have historically replaced sidewalks and curb and gutter without having tree protection. And if you had, on your, in your best judgment, because I'm certain we don't have data, the, what kind of negative consequences, without adding the additional cost, have we actually experienced? Meaning, if we've, we've replaced 100 sidewalks and we've, we've lost 100, and they're all by trees, we've lost 100 trees, or we had, we placed 100 sidewalk sections and we really haven't lost any, I mean, is there, do we have any, I know this is a subjective question, but what is the risk of not doing the, the additional cost? And in the, I'm in the maintenance portion here of the tree protection policy?
Yeah, so I guess I would-
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to, trying to get a value for the amount of money. Like, where do we spend, if we're spending extra money, where is the biggest bang for the buck? And is it here?
Right. The, so I guess the process I kind of outlined for you is one that I believe has happened in the past, that coordination with the forestry department to make a determination on the tree. Is it a continual safety hazard? What, what needs to be done in order to accomplish both the sidewalk goal and can the tree be preserved, or will it experience enough damage that it can't be? I believe that has continued to occur. So I'm, I would not be willing, I wouldn't say that every time a sidewalk has been replaced in proximity to a tree, that the tree has automatically been removed. Now, I do think that within that tree, those tree protection standards, and what some of the, the cost increases may be, is that there are standards in place for how you replace that sidewalk, how you remove a root, and how you interact with that tree. And so when you're talking hand pouring, hand laying, hand removal of curb, gutter, or sidewalk, those are the types of things that we have not done in the past. Cutting a root with a specific tool or a, following a specific procedure has not necessarily been incorporated into our practices before. So, there is certainly a higher standard that we're looking at with the tree protection standard than we, that we've done in the past, that we would incorporate into that process that I described previously. But there, those conversations, those determinations, and that analysis has occurred in the past prior to this, this tree protection standard being in place. And so, it would, it really is done on a case-by-case basis, on when there is a conflict encountered, what choice is made at that time. So I think the, the tree protection policy in place is, is when you have to interact with a tree, when you have to cut roots, or you have to lay sidewalk or remove sidewalk in proximity to a tree, is meant to maximize the likelihood that the tree survives by reducing the stress placed on that tree. Whereas in the past, we may have used, you know, mechanical means of breaking up the sidewalk, or pouring the sidewalk, or removing the root, rather than the hand tools that is required under the tree protection standards. So I think that's probably the best I can explain it to you.
That helps, thank you.
Yeah, you can also find locations throughout the city where a sidewalk has been rerouted. You might see a bump out. Sometimes you'll see a bump out and the tree's no longer there. The tree didn't survive despite the attempt to avoid it. So that has occurred. Kind of, that's kind of made in the field, you know, can, do we have enough right-of-way to move this sidewalk around it? Can we, does it achieve the goal? Will it preserve the tree? Those are all questions that you can't really answer until you're out deciding what needs to be done and, and what the extent of the issue is.
In fact, Milton Street has one of those.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I have one. I was wondering if staff received any calls from the contractors with any questions about the tree protection requirements? And I guess a follow-up to that would be, do we feel confident that they would know how to apply those hand techniques? Do they have experience with them? Do we know?
So I, I did receive a call related to that, directed them to read the, the specifications in particular related to the hand removal, the hand pruning. I don't think they mentioned to me as far as whether or not they had done that before, but they understood that the intent was if this board and if the arborist decides, and if they're doing the removal, then we would apply this, this item. And so there are a number of ifs, as you can see. And, and of course, when we're all said and done, it may not be that, that many would, would apply. Does that help? And I just also want to mention, it was discussed at the Public Works Board of the resolution. I believe there was a motion that then was not seconded to change the motion or the resolution, but the resolution was recommended to the council.
And I guess a follow-up question that I would have, because I saw, see this referenced in a later item, but if we were to approve this with applying some of those tree protection requirements, will that also require oversight by an arborist? And if so, how would that be provided?
On the maintenance contracts, we would be using city staff.
And we have the capacity to do that?
Yes, we believe so.
Okay. So the-
It's a much less labor, it's a much less intensive process than being on-site at a reconstruction each and every day that work is going on. They're kind of, they're by, they're spot-checked, they're not, there aren't, not every maintenance item has a conflict with a tree, and so it's a much lower, it, it, our capacity exists in order to, to go out when we need to, when they are, when the forestry staff gets called out. Where they don't, they're not just dedicating their entire, you know, two months of the summer to being on-site somewhere. It's as needed and where appropriate.
And that's really what this contract, too, is, you know, we don't know where in town these projects are going to be needed, or how many trees are going to be encountered, that there would be a question for the arborist to be involved. So I would assume it's hard to kind of come up with a dollar amount or number of hours of, of staff time that would be needed.
Yeah, it would be, we, we do have, we maintain a list of, of issues that have, that we know of. We do maintain space for complaints we receive throughout the year to be able to address them during that year. So, you know, absent going out, going through our list and going out to each and every site and doing a preliminary analysis, and then, you know, trying to calculate out that, that dollar figure, we'd probably be, we'd probably be spending as much staff time as dollars on undertaking that as we would if we just called them when they were needed throughout the, throughout the year when maintenance is required.
Okay, thanks. Greg.
Just a, a point of clarity. At Public Works, we did go through the, I believe, the three contracts altogether, because this first contract, the bid's a little bit above the opinion of cost, but when you look at the three contracts together, it's actually below the opinion of cost. So that was something that we kind of evaluated when we looked at the whole picture, so.
Okay, would you recommend that?
Go ahead. You have a question or statement?
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like me to show you the last slide, which may encompass what Mr. Waters is discussing?
Well, I guess that's what I was going to ask Greg. Do you recommend, based on having gone through this once before, it'd be good to go through all the stuffs?
I think it's nice to look at the whole thing and then go back and look at it, yeah.
Okay.
Are you okay with that? Great, thank you.
Sure. Dave could-
Before we go on, then, are, are there any other questions on the concrete, the sidewalk and curb and gutter at this point? Okay, then let's go on to the next one. Thanks.
Thank you. So the next contract is the asphalt contract. It's LM 225. Pre-bid estimate, opinion of probable cost was 226. Again, this time, it was based on 2023, which was the last time we had an asphalt bid. We had two bidders at that time. I, we used the average of those two bidders and a 3% inflation rate for two years to create that $226,000 opinion. The low bid of Pain and Dolan came in at $182,000. So as Mr. Waters suggested, some of these are a little higher than our opinion, and some of them are a little lower. Next slide, please, Dave. Here again is the bid tab, again, our opinion of costs. Our two bidders, Pain and Dolan and Wolf Paving, very, very competent two companies that have bid on our projects over a number of years. Next two slides, Dave, please. And as you'll see on the next slide, the two names of the companies that have gotten this bid over the last 10 years are Pain and Dolan and Wolf Paving. And this year was Pain and Dolan. Next slide, please, Dave. This is the chip seal program, which is the third of the three. Our pre-bid was based on '24, last June, too low, with a 3% inflation rate. Our opinion was $82,000. The low bid came in from Scott Construction at $85,576. Next slide, please. Again, the bid tab, and next slide. This is a breakdown, same breakdown of unit price history. Of note on this slide is there are a number of years where Jefferson County was doing this work. Unfortunately, they no longer. So we are now getting back into working with Scott Construction, and as you can see, Farner Asphalt Sealers, who are the other names on the list, and who are the two bidders this year again. Next slide, please. And the slide that Mr. Waters mentioned before that kind of summarizes this. On the left side of the screen was the opinion of costs that was used at our February meeting of $386,000. We were looking, if you recall, to be between the 2025 budget of $330,000 and the budget reserve of $394,000. And then the numbers on the right side are the actual low bids, which equate to $351,000. Again, hits that range in the, between the 2025 budget and the budget reserve. And I'll just note at the bottom, let's all remember that while these three bids are street maintenance contracts, they are used with the utilities as well. So, for example, if there's a water main break that has happened over the last six months, and it needs a new piece of curb and gutter, it needs new asphalt, the water utility would pay a portion of this. And so that wouldn't be in the $330,000 budget for street maintenance. And so when you're looking to award these contracts, some of the, some of the payment of these contracts is actually paid by the three utilities, sewer, water, and electric. And I believe that is the end of the slides.
On that last point, Duane, how is that calculated? How much the utility has to contribute?
Time and material, time and materials. So we track employee time, we track the purchase amounts, we have, we have work orders assigned to each, to each task, and then it's, it's broken out. So if we're replacing pavement because of a water main break, the water utility is covering the cost of the replacement of that section of roadway, and we're tracking that through our work order system.
And to add on to what-
LM 1-25. So are there any other questions or discussion on that particular contract?
I would just recap that Public Works did recommend approval of the three contracts that, that were just outlined.
Thank you. And I guess I'd like to restate, partly to make sure that I'm understanding something that you said earlier, Drake, about the concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance, and Mary had asked about, you know, sort of how we did it before and how we do it now. So if I'm understanding it correctly, our staff's interaction and, you know, and arborist evaluating when a tree is encountered and making, you know, the best professional recommendation for what to do, that has been our practice and that will continue. And it's, and applying the tree protection policy to sidewalk and curb and gutter is really going to involve like the hand tools and the hand pouring and, and those kinds of techniques when a tree is encountered. Would that be an accurate way of saying it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion, comments, questions? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 25-23?
Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quenough?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Okay, so we've heard the presentation, but let's formally move on to Resolution 25-24. And Alisa, would you read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 25-24, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for the milling, pulverization, and asphalctic concrete paving and patching contract, LM 2-25.
I'll move to approve City Council Resolution 25-24.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 25-24?
Ms. Quenough?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Thank you. So then the third one that we heard the presentation on is Resolution 25-25. Would you read that one for us, Lisa?
City Council Resolution 25-25, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for a chip seal maintenance contract, LM 3-25.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve City Council Resolution 25-25, as noted.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Ms. Quenough. Is there any further discussion? I had a question on this one. Is the chip seal, I'm trying to remember the map, does that include Madison Street?
Dave, could you bring the presentation back up and go-
Is that the Mill and Overlay?
And go to the second slide, please. And so, to your point, when you're looking at that map on Madison Street, it actually rotates back and forth between Mill and Overlay and Chip Seal.
Okay.
And that is because of the lead service lines that still remain. And so the staff recommendation was chip seal in the places where there's still a chance where there'll be a-
That it's going to get torn up again.
And then Mill and Overlay in the places where there's already been replacement of the LSL.
Okay, good. Thank you for clarifying that. And, and the reason I, I brought up Madison, just a comment, I'm, I'm in support of this contract, but I know the Public Works Board discussed bike lanes and parking. Do you want to talk about- Do you want to talk about that a little bit, or?
Just to, just to jump in real quick before, so you will be seeing some items related to that before the city council. We have to go through our ordinances and find out where the, we prohibit parking based on ordinance, and so we need to go through our ordinance and find the appropriate places about where the council would need to amend its ordinances in order to proceed with implementation of bike lanes as recommended by the Public Works Board. And so that's why you don't see it in front of you tonight, is there's a bit more, there's a bit more legwork than just saying we need to put paint on the pavement. Because we prohibit parking based on ordinance, we have to go through and find those places and make sure we're not creating any conflicts.
Makes sense. Greg, did you want to add anything?
I, I don't have anything to add to that. I think he highlighted it, and we'll see it in a future agenda item, so.
So that we can approve this contract regardless of whatever recommendation or decision that the council makes on bike lane painting in the future?
Correct. We won't, we won't paint until the completion of the project, and so we, we're not missing out on anything.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions on this third contract, LM 3-25? Okay, can we please have a roll call vote on Resolution 25-25?
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quenough?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Okay, so our next agenda item is Resolution 25-26. Lisa, would you read that for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-26, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for the Milton Street reconstruction and Linden Street utility extension contract, 2-2025.
Thank you. Let's go to the staff presentation first on this one, because I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion.
Dave, could you pull up the other presentation you had on the screen?
The green one.
Thank you. As, as Dave is pulling that up, for the new council member here, my name is Matt Hassel. I'm with Strand Associates. I'm project manager on Milton Street. A little background about me, I have been with Strand for, will be eight years in June here, and have been specifically working in the city on, on construction and design, along helping city staff with some other projects for the last six and a half years. So, it's a little history about me, and I guess we'll get going here. So, just an outline of what we'll talk about, we'll go through the drawings again briefly, the bid results, the reconstruction bid history, what we've been seeing the last number of years, a few different slides on the CIP and budget with the methodology of the opinion of probable cost, and then the CIP and budget for Milton Street. A couple of slides here on potential reasons for the high bid, opinion of the increased cost for tree protection, potential indirect costs of the tree protection, then we'll come back to that opinion of increased cost for tree protection slide and kind of wrap that up a little bit. We'll switch gears briefly over to Linden Street with the drawings, that alternative bid result for Linden Street, again, the CIP and budget for Linden Street, the breakdown of unit prices, and then at the end we'll give a staff recommendation. Next slide. So, we, the council here has seen these drawings back in February, I believe, when I was here for the approval to go to bid. So, real briefly, water, sewer, reconstruction, spot replaced sidewalk, full replacement of curb and gutter and asphalt from Ferry Drive on the west, to next slide, to the Main Street on the east, where that concrete joint butts in from that Main Street project, along with our tree protection zones kind of highlighted in orange. Next slide. So the bid results, we had one bidder, Rock Road Companies, their base bid, base bid came in at $1.18 million. Next slide. Just kind of give a brief bid history, and Dwayne, feel free to jump in. So back in, we didn't have a project last year in 2024, so previous was 2023. There were a couple of different projects. We had College Street and we had Brookstone Phase 8. Notably, Brookstone Phase 8 was not awarded at, at that time, so it was rebid. A little bit contractor is shown there, and then we added a column for where Rock Road kind of came in, just to kind of present where they have been in the past. And historically, they, they have been the highest bidder on the last four projects that they were bid on, so just some information for you. I don't know, Dwayne, you have anything else?
No.
On that one?
Thank you for the full disclosure there.
Yeah. Next slide, I'm actually going to pass it to Dwayne here for like the CIP and how we kind of break out the opinion of probable cost.
So in, in order to analyze the bids, what, what I tried to do on this slide is to show, well, how did we create the CIP? How do we come up with that number? How that hits the budget? So when we do the CIP each year, we base it on the unit prices from the previous projects. We built it into, based on a linear foot cost. And this is done prior to any substantial design. We know that there might be a project on a particular street, we know how long it is, everything is based on a linear foot. The last update of that unit price analysis was done on 7/30 of 2023, which included the College Street bid data. Typically, what we'll do is we'll add a 15% contingency to that number to try and incorporate what might, unforeseen items that might come up during design. So that 15% is there to give us a little leeway during design. It also includes a 3% annual inflation rate, in this case, from that last time it was updated, from 2023 to whatever year we're, we're projecting the project to occur. In this case, Milton in 2025, so there's a 3% increase for, applied for each of the two years. In the 2025 budget, and as was discussed earlier during public comment, there was a surcharge to try and project in the CIP and in the budget, we tried to put a number into the CIP, and that was based on $10 for every department on the project. So that equated to $50 per linear foot, in this case, close to 1,000. We had 875 in our CIP budget. This, this equates, depending on how you round the numbers, to somewhere to 4, 4.5 to 5 and 1/2% increase. Because remember, it's not only the $50, but then you're multiplying it by 15% contingency, and you're multiplying it by a number of items for engineering, and each of those numbers are then rounded by the nearest thousand, and so it's somewhere in that 5% range. As I stated-
Dwayne, can I just interrupt you for a minute?
I'm sorry.
When you say $10 per linear foot for each category, you're talking about sewer, water, storm sewer, sidewalk, what, what are those five?
You hit four of the five, the fifth one would be the street department.
Street, okay, okay. So that's where the $50 per linear foot overall on the project, that's where that comes from, okay.
I, I didn't apply it to the electric because the electric was in the 2024 budget. And you'll see that, I believe, on the next slide. Next slide, Dave? Thank you. So in this slide, what I tried to show you on the far left side, the first one, two, three, six columns, that's all related to the CIP, that's all related to how we created the budget for you over the last several of years for this project. On the far left side, we're talking 2023 CIP, that was for the engineering. Typically, that happens in the year prior to the construction. Well, at that time, we were looking at construction 2024, and then if you recall, we, we pushed this project off into 2025. You'll note that probably the second column isn't really needed, but what we did do in the third column is we added into the budget $200,000 for electric project, which would, the intention was to try and get that work done in 2024 in preparation of '25 construction. So as we, as we stated earlier, the five departments, street, sidewalk, storm, wastewater, and water, all added that five, that $10 for a total of 50, which gave us the CIP for 2025 for engineering and construction. And I broke that down separately because when we're talking about the bid, we're only talking about the construction number. So you're looking at the fifth column as it compares to the bid. The sixth column is just the total of all of those five to the left, and then we have the departments, and now on the right-hand side is really what the bid came in. This is actually what we received in the bid. So, and we broke that down by department in the bid, and then in the final right column, we're showing the difference between the construction amount and the bid amount. I will note that in the first line, or the first row in the electric, if you recall, this bid only provides for boring of underground conduit for electric, and so it doesn't include all of the lines, it doesn't include all of the transformers. That work will be done by cities, by the electric utility staff, and so that $149,000 remaining really isn't a true number because that will be used during the construction of that portion of the project by staff. So we're really tying down into comparing the numbers that are below that. So the street, actually, the street came in under our CIP estimate, sidewalk was slightly over budget. The storm sewer, as you'll note, is during the design, and Matt can maybe allude to this, is storm sewer was determined not to be included because of the shape of this, of the design of the street and the proximity to the intersections with Main Street and Ferry Drive. So therefore, in the bid, there's actually $160,000 available in the CIP budget. The two that were significantly over budget were the water and sewer portion, as you'll note. If you look at the total column on the right side, while it says 275 available, it's probably more like 125 available between the bid and the CIP in your budget. And then if you do really want to remove the storm sewer budget, you're actually in deficit, or you would be short by $34,000. Next slide. I may want to add, let me add something here, it's a little off script, a little off the, is that I did look at, if I removed the $10 over the five, over the five departments, what would that do? And as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, it's about $50,000. So you would add, that number would be down by 50,000 on the construction line. I hope that helps. Next slide.
One slide up, Dave. Previous, yep, thank you. We just kind of wanted to walk through some potential reasons why we had a high bid on this project. The first one, you know, was the single bidder. Typically, we have two to three to four bidders each year. So a lack of competition, you know, can play a role in this, you know. It's not favorable to get one bidder, you know, like seeing that it happens unfortunately sometimes. The market uncertainty with inflation, tariffs and labor costs, you know, could, could result in a slightly higher bid, some material supply issues, and then the tree protection standards that were in place, or that we are implementing on this project. Next slide. So the slide is kind of broken into two aspects. One is, in, in general, this is our opinion of, of maybe why the cost has increased specifically for tree protection, so direct, a direct cost that we can actually put a number to, and then potential indirect costs, which will be on the next slide, but for direct costs, that 88,000 number, that directly came from moving the water main from the north side of the street to the south side of the street, and in order to do that, we had to install temporary water main, just because the design, you know, the water and sanitary sewer are currently running in the same ditch right now. So from Main Street, everything was lined up to go on the north side of the, of the road, but because of the many potential tree impacts on that north side, we flipped it to the south side to help protect as many tree roots as possible. That in turn caused us to have to put a temporary water system in because people would have been out of service, especially with that west connection to Ferry Drive, just the way it kind of geometrically lined up.
To, to expand on this, the reason we're trying, the reason we're trying to pull these costs out for you is when the council adopted the pilot program, you expressed the desire to see what the costs of implementation would be. We had to make certain choices during design because we did not design two roads, right? We did not design Milton Street with tree protection standards and without tree protection standards. That creates an unfortunate scenario where that $88,000, we, we can't take that out, we can't pull that out of, out of the bid. We are prohibited by state statute to negotiate with the low bidder. We, we can only go by what was, what was bid competitively through the state statutory process. So we can't go to them and say, we think this is, we think this is bad, or we changed our mind, or we think you're too expensive here, justify this, and try and negotiate them down. We, you have to, if you're making a change, a substantial change from what was bid, you have, your only option is to reject bids and rebid the project. So we, we can't tell them, if this council says we don't want to move forward with tree protection, unfortunately, we can't get that $88,000 back. So that choice was made to avoid tree conflicts because the best way to preserve a tree is to avoid a conflict with that tree, and so that's why that water main was moved, was to minimize those conflicts. So that $88,000 is directly attributable to the design necessity to incorporate the tree protection standards into it, but we can't pull that out. So I just want you all to be aware. These other costs that he's going to go through are the costs that you have flexibility over as you discuss your priorities for the project.
Can I just ask a, a quick question about the water main design, as long as we're talking about that item? So was that in the plans that the council reviewed in February?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess I just don't remember it being highlighted. So I, I guess, it came as a little bit of a surprise to me, in a good way. I mean, I guess if the design was done intentionally to try to avoid tree impacts, I think that's a positive, but I, I guess I wasn't keying into that, that that was a feature of the design. So I appreciate the explanation that really that's something that we can't take back out again because that's just, that was part of what we asked them to bid on. So, Mary?
Can I ask a question, a follow-up on also the design? There are trees on both the north and the south side, there are 16 on the north, 16 on the south, so I'm curious why moving it to the south makes it more or less impactful on the trees than when we have them on both sides?
It has to do with like the radius of the tree protection itself.
Because they are larger on the north side, with larger calipers. So it's a size and age-
Location of services as well.
Correct.
Where the services are located going into the home, do they need to be, would they need to be moved? Is a service conflicting with it? So that can be different on each side of the street, so that factors into it.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you.
All right, so another direct cost is the, the arborist that, you know, we were required to inquire about, you know, for, for the project, and in working with, basically, I, I believe I stated this before we bid, was that I was working with an arborist out of Madison that Strand has worked with in the past, deemed responsible. They worked on a couple of MMSD projects of ours, they're very familiar with, their company is called Tree Health Management, so they're very- their company is called Tree Health Management, so they're very familiar with, you know, with tree health and, and the impacts to trees during construction. They had our specifications and I was kind of going back and forth with them with questions that they had. And their, their price to us was that eleven thousand number. So that, that would be the cost for kind of on-call services. So anytime we'd be approaching a tree protection zone, we'd be approaching work the next day, that might be affecting roots or sidewalk removal or curb and gutter removal. You know, we can give them a call and that's, then they, they would be out here on like an on-call basis. So that eleven thousand number is part of that direct cost.
So when work is going on in the tree protection zone that's outlined in the plan, the tree's protection policy requires an arborist to be on-site and supervising that work to ensure that the standards and practices are being, are being implemented. We would also, we also, our in-house staff, we also intend to go in and check random, you know, randomly when we can to make sure that, you know, something has not been going on that would be in conflict with that. But you can imagine with the amount of tree protection zones that are on the street, that arborists will need to be there quite frequently. And so that is what is incorporated into the cost is their supervision of the work that's going on in those tree protection zones.
And lastly, for the direct cost would be the, the alternative deductions that, that gets added in there. So in total, as a direct cost, we're at about a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. The next slide, we may be seeing some potential indirect costs. We don't know exactly if these are, you know, if these prices are directly inflated. But we pulled a few of these items out and kind of dug a little deeper because at first glance, we, we saw some prices that, some unit prices that were, I would say, a little higher than maybe what we'd be expecting. So we wanted to kind of dig a little deeper into kind of what was going on there.
So just to clarify, staff will not be able to guarantee you that had the tree protection standards not been in place, that these costs would have come back differently. What, that what we've done is that these costs kind of tripped our alarm bells as why are these costs so much higher than we were expecting? And they are in areas in which you would expect more difficulty when you are considering the longevity and viability of a, of a tree. And so it is possible that in the course of bidding, that certain increases were baked into the base bid and that's what's being reflected here. We don't know that for certain. You could have bid this with no tree protection standards in place at all and gotten these exact same numbers. We don't necessarily believe that would be the case, but they are, the cost increases are much higher even if we had applied a much more aggressive inflationary factor. And so that is what's, that's what made us look at them and say, why?
Yeah, so just kind of recap this table. What we did is we took the two thousand and twenty three bid prices from College Street. We had two bidders, a little bit, you know, the two bidders, the low bid and the high bid, inflated that number three percent for annual increase, so three percent over two years. And then compared that number to what today, you know, the bidder's unit price was to get a percentage of where the difference came versus the low unit price versus the high unit price. And as you can see, you know, some of these percentages are sixty five, seventy percent, eighty percent higher than the high bid even. So totaling all these up was about ninety two thousand five hundred dollars. And then if you took out the alternatives, because that would, that would be subtracted from, from this number, you get that fifty three thousand number. Next slide. So then that number kind of gets added back in to our opinion of increased cost, both direct costs and potentially indirect costs. That total then is about a hundred and ninety thousand. We'll touch on that in our, kind of our summary slide of recommendations. Switch gears quickly here to Linden Street, Linden Street. Next slide, Dave, please. Is identify as alternative number one on the project. Utility extension only, not a reconstruction, replace pavement with in-kind, not up to city standard. You know, it's only utility extension, so no curb and gutter, no sidewalk on this job. So the drawings are here. Two hundred feet was about proposed, give or take, to, to service the, the residents that either are or future annexed into the city. Next slide. So again, as I said, it's, this is alternate number one. And this alternate price was two hundred and thirty one thousand, three hundred and forty one thousand dollars. Next slide. Dwayne?
So again, same type of slide, but this time I didn't break it out by department. I just did a flat, what was in our CIP. And as you can see, in the construction portion was a hundred and forty four thousand. The bid came in at two hundred and thirty one, almost ninety thousand dollars more. I'll note that there are no trees in the tree protection zone in this street. So that was not, there was not an increase in our estimate or in our opinion of probable cost worth relate, regardless of that, pardon me. So you're seeing that the bid actually came in quite significantly higher than our CIP budget. And it also shows, and I think it was discussed earlier, that if we would go to assessment from this number, we would be looking at seventy seven thousand for a three-service assessment or fifty eight thousand on a four-service assessment. That's of note. Again, we'll, we'll touch on that in our staff recommendation and the later slides. But I'll move back to Matt and he can go to the next slide.
Yeah, next slide, Dave. So this is similar to the Milton Street slide, kind of breaks up very similar except there isn't tree protection on this street. And just to add, that's because the trees are on private property. So the tree protection zones would not be applied in this case. Again, you can see the difference between the unit prices, same inflation and, and a similar kind of increase in, in percentages from the bid to the high bid from two thousand and twenty three. So next slide, this is our staff recommendation.
Before we get to this one, Matt, could you run them through alternatives one through nine and exactly what they included?
Yeah, yeah, thank, thank you. So alternates one through nine. Yeah.
They're attached to the bid tab letter, but he'll go through them here.
So alternative number one is Linden Street. I just went through that one. Alternative number two was the difference between ductile iron pipe and PVC pipe for water main. In our base bid, we had PVC pipe. So the bid alternative number two, ductile iron would have a thirty three, almost thirty four thousand dollar increase to the project if you chose ductile iron. The last number of years, we've been putting this in here just to see what prices we've been getting and if things have changed. Bid alternative number three is the tree protection zone fencing. Tree protection and fencing includes just a fencing around the perimeter of the tree protection zones that are laid out in the drawings. They're hatched and it kind of shows where the fencing would go between the curb and the sidewalk, along with behind the sidewalk on private property where the tree protection zone kind of goes into. Just to notify the contractor, you still can't go into private property on that. That would be a deduct price of eleven thousand dollars. Bid alternative number four and number six actually kind of go together. It's the no root cutting for curb and gutter removal and the no root cutting for sidewalk removal. These are areas where, that are identified, where tr, where trees are identified cannot have roots cut during them, during removal of concrete curb and gutter or from sidewalk. The forester is then going to determine during that process if a root needs to be cut for the removal of curb and gutter or from sidewalk. So those prices listed here are deductive, bid alternate four of two thousand four hundred dollars. Bid alternate number six, two hundred and fifty three dollars. Jump back to bid alternative number five, and I'm sorry that I'm jumping a little bit, I should have grouped those together. Hand-formed curb and gutter, that, that would be in a, in an area where within six inches of the back of curb, no excavation is allowed in a tree protection area. So then hand-formed curb and gutter would be needed, they won't be able to come in and machine pour that area and, and potentially damage some roots. A cost there of twenty three thousand six hundred dollars. Bid alternatives number seven and number eight are root cutting at curb and gutter and at sidewalks. So bid alternative number seven is root cutting for curb and gutter. That would be when an arborist can, basically deems that roots can be cut in, in this area at a per lineal foot basis. So the arborist will then go and say, okay, yes, you're, you're okay to cut this, maybe not this one. That same kind of rationale applies to the sidewalk installation as well. So the prices for root cutting for curb and gutter, three hundred and seventy one thou, three hundred and seventy one dollars. Root cutting for sidewalk, five hundred and fifteen dollars. And then lastly, the damaged root protection, that's bid alternate number nine. That one includes pruning any roots over one inch in diameter that have been damaged during construction. That's basically just hand pruning is, is what that would be. That item totals one thousand, just over one thousand dollars. Any questions on, I guess, through the alternates?
I do have a question on the alternates. I didn't see, something that we talked about in February, one of the items I was looking for was like the soil compaction or equipment storage. Is that just not allowed under this bid? Okay, so it's not a, an alternate that you deduct or we just pretty didn't allow it.
Isn't identified as something that would increase or decrease costs significantly. So there will be areas in which they cannot stage equipment or store materials. There's adequate space elsewhere.
So that's an aspect of tree protection that's, would be incorporated in the base bid regardless of the alternates?
Correct, that'd be an incidental.
Okay, great, thank you.
So that would be done without bid three, which is the tree protection zone fencing?
Correct, because we wouldn't be.
The fencing doesn't extend into the roadway because there's nowhere to put it. And so essentially, what the arborist will be doing is you look at the canopy, the drip line and down, and you're not allowed to store material or equipment within what would be the tree protection zone. Essentially, what we'll likely do with the contractor is find an appropriate area for staging and storage of, of material and just designate that.
Thank you.
So staff recommendation, I'll take this one. And I, I want to, I want to call attention to this is, and I'll touch on it after. The public works board recommendation differs from the staff recommendation in this instance. So the, in staff's opinion, the bid was, was, is consistent with the tree protection pilot program that was adopted by the city council. With the savings that are largely attributed to the unnecessary stormwater infrastructure that was removed during the design of it, the project is mainly consistent with what you are expecting to spend within the CIP. Now, line items within those are different. This will hit the utilities harder than was anticipated, which does have a financial impact on those utilities and could necessitate earlier or larger rate increases at some point down the line when we, when we analyze the impact of debt, debt payments on those, on those utilities. This maintains our construction calendar. This Milton Street was specifically scheduled in order to complete before the school year started as, as well as not interfere with the annual Milton Street block party. So we have completion dates in there that are required to be met. So if we reject, that will likely bump Milton Street into two thousand and twenty six, which then would require either two projects in two thousand and twenty six or a domino effect of moving projects back. There is no guarantee that costs will go down with a rebid, rebid, even if more contractors bid because of that additional time. So costs continue to rise. We don't know what two thousand and twenty six will look like. We don't know what factors might be in play there. So while there are significant cost increases, ultimately, we are able to accomplish them largely within the plans that we had incorporated with some, with some overages. There is, there's no doubt there with some overages. But this would be the councils and the city's first experience with tree protect, the tree protection standards on a large scale on a reconstruction project. That may benefit us when we proceed to probably more complex street redesigns like Prospect Street that are larger, longer, more conflicts that exists, that can give us some feedback on how it went. So that is largely where the city's staff recommendation came down on. We were trying to be responsive to the city council's clear desire to see how the tree protection standard went, to see how it actually worked in the field. Now, you have real costs now that you can chew on, so that maybe changed your priority, but that's what led staff to that recommendation. We do, we did recommend rejecting, so that means we rejected all bids. So bid one was Linden Street. The cost was, the, I'm sorry, alternative one was Linden Street, far higher than what our estimates expected, far more than we think is reasonable for a project of that size. We had hoped that bidding it with a larger project would result in a more competitive pricing because of the mobilization factor. That did not occur. We don't find the cost acceptable. We do believe it would be cost prohibitive from an assessment standpoint. So we recommend rejecting that and bidding it as a standalone project. We can't, again, we can't negotiate with the one bidder. We can't, we can't ask them or, or analyze their pricing and try and negotiate down. We're prohibited by statute in doing so. Our only option is to reject that alternative and rebid it in the future. The ductile iron, we recommended rejecting for the cost increase. We've had a good experience with PVC pipe. I'm not sure we'll continue having that in alternates going forward. We have for the last several years, but we have not experienced issues with PVC piping. The quality has been where we've wanted it to be. So we can certainly continue exploring that in bids, but at an increased cost of tens of thousands of dollars, not worth the additional expenditure in staff's opinion. And then we reject bids three through nine, which are deducts. So that means that if we don't incorporate those tree protection standards, we experience a savings. We're rejecting those because our recommendation is to award the base bid and incorporate the tree protection standards as the pilot program that the council had adopted. And so that is essentially award, a recommendation of award for the base bid of the project. For Milton Street specifically. The next slide, Dave. I, I should, I should mention, the public works board recommendation accepted alternatives three through nine. So that means that they accepted the removal of, they recommended, exception of the tree protection, removal of the tree protection standards from the bid at the savings that was about forty thousand dollars. Plus, we would then not have the arborist, which is another eleven thousand dollars. So savings of approximately fifty thousand dollars. Again, if you truly wanted a project that did not incorporate any of the tree protection standards, you would need to reject the entire. standards, you would need to reject the entire project and rebid it with a redesign of the water system. The option two that's in front of you.
Excuse me, if we rejected it, that would probably make it a 2026 project?
I believe that you would have to unless you were willing to extend the completion of that project into the school year and disrupt that Milton Street block party event. We wouldn't be able to kind of redo some minor redesign and rebid. And if you put that tight of a timeline on bidders, you're hurting your chance of actually lowering the costs because you've removed flexibility from their schedule. Option two, if you're looking at the direct and indirect costs of the tree protection pilot program and the lack of bidders is unacceptable to the city council, you can reject all bids and rebid with construction in 2026. Specifically, if you did not want to incorporate the tree protection standards, we would then redesign the water main to the original planned side of the street, and we would also still rebid Linden Street later, but still in 2025 to see if we can get better pricing on Linden Street. This could have potential savings of $138,000 to $191,000 that incorporates direct and indirect costs, potential indirect costs. But those savings could be reduced if construction costs considerably increase by 2026. It does push back the CIP construction calendar by a year, so we would either do two projects in 2026 or create that domino effect. With the grant funding that we've received, eventually we will be doing two, if the domino occurs, we would be doing two projects at some point, 2027, probably, maybe 2028, because we're going to maintain that schedule that we have with the DOT for those agreements for the grant awards. There will be some additional time and minor design costs to redesign the water main and service connections. So that's kind of where it sits now. So you can follow the public works board recommendation. You can create your own decision. Staff obviously had its own recommendation. We've tried to lay out the costs for you. We've tried to lay out the pros and cons of both accepting and rejecting and what that does. It's disappointing to get one bid. We expected to get more than one bid. We had more interest in the lead up to bid opening as far as questions from contractors that we thought there was more interest in this, and they ultimately decided not to bid on projects. But that's just the hand we were dealt with the one bid option. So really, the only way to try and get lower costs is to reject and rebid because we can't negotiate directly with a low bidder even when they are the only bid.
Okay, are there any questions for staff regarding Resolution 25-26 and the proposed contract?
Director Schreiner is still here if you have questions about tree protection standards.
I guess I'll start out by expressing some frustration that there was only one bidder, and that happened to be the high bidder for the last, I think it was four go rounds. So that's a little frustrating. At the same time, I recognize that if we reject, it'll fall into next year, 2026, prices will be higher. Does that mean we'll get a lower bid? Possibly. Does it mean we'll get a higher bid? Maybe. There's a lot of unknowns here. The tree protection, I guess I'm supportive of trying to save as many of the heritage trees as we can on the tree lawn. At what cost? That was kind of the thing that the Public Works Group went through and just trying to figure out, you know, at what cost does this add to a project like this? And you could see some of the figures that were thrown about in the proposal and trying to get our hands around that. But I guess overall, I think the risk of pushing the project to next year adds, it adds possibly a higher price. It puts more projects on top of each other, and if we just kick the can down the road, we will have roads that continue to get worse and worse and worse. I know I get phone calls and sometimes I get people stopping me on the street saying, have you looked at my street? It needs to be redone. And I'm hearing more and more of that here lately, and I think that's because we did kick the can down the street a couple years ago. But so I guess I am favoring moving forward at this point, so.
I should clarify one thing for you. I apologize for missing it. The resolution in front of you reflects the public works board recommendation. So I just want to be clear. So that means that public works board recommendation rejects alternatives one and two, which is Linden Street and ductile iron, but accepts alternatives three through nine, which is the removal of tree protection standards.
Thank you for clarifying that.
If the council chooses to remove tree protection standards, we will still, to the best of our ability, work with our arborists on staff to preserve trees to the greatest extent possible, but you won't have the teeth of it existing in the contract and the obligations that the contractor has taken on by agreeing to them.
So I've got a question, or again, maybe just restating to make sure I'm understanding. So if we approve the resolution as written, that means we would be awarding the alternatives three through nine, which are the tree protection policy pieces, meaning that those extra costs and actions would not be included in the project. But the relocation of the water main, which was done to, you know, in some effort to protect some mature trees, will still be in it unless we decide to start over and redesign. And the question that I had asked about the storage of equipment, that will be addressed. So there are a couple of aspects of what, you know, of what we're trying to accomplish, I think, in terms of tree preservation on street reconstruction projects. There are a couple of aspects that will be in here, not at zero cost because of that water main piece, but they will be in here. So I appreciate that aspect of it. I was kind of curious why the fencing costs so much. That sort of surprised me. I mean, in the overall project cost, it's, I don't know, 1% or something like that, but it doesn't seem like it would cost that much to put construction fencing around, you know, a couple dozen trees. But I don't know if you have a thought on that, Matt?
It's difficult to anticipate costs from contractors on certain items, and I don't have a great answer for you on that. It's just hard to quantify what the contractor puts a price on, so.
Yeah, and some of the other items, you know, with the root cutting were actually relatively low, so that took me a little bit by surprise. I was trying to figure out, and I wonder if anybody's really done this math. I think, Greg, actually, you commented at public works board, like if we were to total up, what are the overall, on this bid, if we included all the tree protection provisions, like what percent increase of the project cost is that, or what percent of the project cost is that?
I have my calculation. Does staff want to offer that?
I believe our calculations are similar, is that when we're looking at the indirect and direct costs, you get about the 11.6%. If we factor in that linear foot, that $50 per lineal foot increase, that's going to go, that goes up. But based on the bid, the opinion of probable costs, you know, on this project and the bids that we received, 11.6, 11 and 1/2, between 11 and 12 is a reasonable assertion.
That was the same number I had, too.
If you could go back in time and you could rebid it with none of the tree protection, if you had designed two roads, basically, and said, this incorporates tree protection, this does not incorporate tree protection, that is really the only way to know for certain exactly what that price difference would be. That is obviously a bit cost prohibitive to do and redundant to design two roads, which is why, obviously, the council didn't direct us to do that, and we didn't proceed with that. So that's the best we can really give you. We could, you know, we are confident in our belief that you cannot remove that $88,000. If the council wishes for specific research onto that and to formulate, you know, whether it's a legal opinion or something of that, we could do that for you. That would be more of a formal opinion to you, but if you review, you know, Lee of Wisconsin Municipalities Advice and things of that nature, changing the design of a street after you've bid has been considered to be unallowable.
So we can't change the budget by more than 5%? Is that what it is?
I threw that out there. I'd have to go back and look. There is something that's considered substantial change versus insubstantial changes. You are permitted to change order during a project when you encounter things in the field that the design could not anticipate. But change orders, and it may be 15%, I can look it up if you need me to, a change order that exceeds a certain amount, the best practice is to rebid that portion of the project.
Which makes sense, yeah.
Because you've essentially, you've changed it so much that maybe somebody else would have bid on it had that been the design from the forefront, from the get-go.
So just to follow up on that cost, I mean, I guess you sort of alluded to this, Drake, but I would assert that the 11.6% or whatever we want to call it increase attributable to the tree protection is an understatement because you already presumed 4.5% in putting together the documents. You know, we sort of, you know, our staff sort of anticipated how much more that would be, and then it was 11.6% more yet. So, and I'm not saying to dispute anything so much as, you know, this is the first project where we're looking at what is the cost of putting this policy into place, and so we're getting a sense of it's maybe somewhere between 11 and 15% of a project cost on this project. And so that will give us a forecast of maybe the kind of dollars that we would be looking at in a future project.
I think having learned from this process and because that $88,000 is such a significant piece of it, that in the future, we probably would eat the cost of designing, if it's just the one design element of it, and it's going to be water, we would ask bidders to bid on both the construction of it on this side of the street and construction on it on this side of the street. That's difficult to do in this circumstance because essentially I would have been directing the engineer to design something in conflict with a pilot program that the council had adopted. But I think learning from that going forward, I think making, you know, having that discussion with the council now that we're aware of how that works and getting the council's acquiescence or direction to do something like that when it may come up could be beneficial to us in the future.
Other comments or questions for staff on this item?
We didn't really talk about the Linden Street aspect of it, but that's almost like a no-brainer that we reject that at this point and go out to bid on that later as a separate project.
I agree. Michelle?
I was looking over the ad hoc committee on urban forestry resolution that we had back in January, looking at charge number one and specifically in the areas that had to do with road reconstruction projects and having a shift in design, such as changing the high-low points. One of the questions that this brought to mind, obviously, we're looking at the dollars, right? And this is the first time we're implementing the recommendations. I'm really having a hard time with balancing what it is that we should be prioritizing. We spent a lot of time putting together, and the people who were in the ad hoc, including city staff committee, put a lot of time and effort into this.
Proposal?
Thank you. Proposal. And at the first onset of us doing something with it, we're, in a sense, saying, yeah, this is too expensive, we can't do this, out the door. Now granted, the projects that we're looking at are significant, and moving forward, I would imagine that, you know, we would have other considerations. With only having one bid, you know, we don't have a lot of options, but does it make sense how this could be perceived where we went through the effort of making an ad hoc committee for this exact reason, and then just in turn, when it became too expensive, saying, whoop, nope, never mind, we can't?
That's a political consideration for you that I'm not going to be able to advise you on. What I can say is that the ad hoc committee had specific charges to look at and really focused on how would we preserve trees during public infrastructure projects. Your scope is broader, and so you must consider all of the information that's now available to you and balance the increased cost of incorporating tree protection standards to maximize the potential of tree retention during infrastructure projects and the increased cost that comes with that and the other projects that you have to consider in relation to the city's needs as a whole. So, yes, there was a significant amount of work went into the development of the tree protection standards. You have that to weigh and the benefits of retaining those trees and the financial considerations. So it's a question for the council of what is your priority? What is important to you? What policies do you want to see implemented? You do this all throughout the year on projects, and you prioritize certain needs, certain wants over others. And it doesn't mean that not all of them are valuable, but you balance whether to expand the library versus whether to, you know, reconstruct another street. You balance whether to redo Sandy Beach Park or, you know, build a restaurant at Sandy Beach Park or not build a restaurant at Sandy Beach Park. You grapple with equipment purchases throughout departments that are necessary versus, you know, even just competing among departments. What is necessary because we can't, the needs and expectations of the community are higher than the resources that we have available. So that necessitates prioritizing and goal-setting, and I can't tell you what priorities are right or wrong to each and every one of you, but that is what the council has to grapple with, is, is the tree protection standards worth the costs that are in front of you on this particular project? You don't have, this doesn't mean you have to incorporate them on every project going forward. It still is a pilot with a, can't remember each street that was named in the...
I think there's two more, yeah.
I think there's two more after this. So we will go through similar processes in the future, perhaps more refined processes, things that we've learned from this one, and how we can better get to you information and cost comparisons without incurring an unacceptable amount of extra design work, you know, designing two streets versus... of extra design work, you know, designing two streets versus, you know, one designed feature. That's the best I can help you with that question.
That was a beautiful answer, thank you. Greg?
I got a follow-up on, on that a bit. I guess if we follow the, the Public Works Board's recommendation as the motion's written, how will that impact the, uh, the roughly thirty-two trees on Milton Street that are in that tree lawn?
Hmm, I can't answer that for you right now. I would need to sit down with, um, Eric most likely to determine, and probably, some of it would be decisions in the field. You know, we would need to see what the... I can't, I can't answer that question for you. Our policy would be to retain as many trees as possible, um, through this, through the, um, standards and specifications within the contract, um, if there are things, but one thing that we don't really know is that some of the tree protection standards incorporated are there to mitigate the damage that's done when damage must be done to the tree. So, when a tree root must be cut, if you cut it by hand and you cover it and you keep it watered and you cover it as quickly as possible, the damage, the stress that has been put on that tree, Eric, you can come up and correct me if I'm wrong, um, is less, has been lessened. If those standards aren't in place and we hit a tree root while we are mechanically excavating within what would have been a tree protection zone, that tree may not, may not die immediately, we may think we have saved it and retained it, but three years from now, it, it may, it may not survive.
Right.
Um, so, you know, how many of those thirty-two trees would we lose if we did not incorporate the tree protection standards? I would need to sit down with Eric and go through them and s- just, and just say that these are, are not practically able, able to be saved. These may be endangered, or these we can avoid doing X, Y, and Z. We'd have to, you know, there's services, there's, there's just design choices that factor into that, that I just, I can't give you an answer on how many of the thirty-two trees would be, um, affected, and I also can't guarantee you that with these tree possession, preservation standards in place, that all thirty-two of those trees that are not marked for removal will survive.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Are we ready for someone to make a motion?
Can I ask a clarifying question on the, uh, motion itself? I want to make sure I'm clear on the section two, when we're talking about the alternatives, three through nine are awarded, so I'm, I was reading that, that we are doing the tree protection, and then we are not, we're rejecting one and two, which means we're not doing Linden, so am I, why am I not getting this? Why am I completely confused all of a sudden?
This is confusing, and it's tied back to choosing to incorporate the tree protection standards into the base bid and making the alternates the removal of those standards. So, an alternate, when an alternate is awarded, it means you're doing what's in that alternate. So, when we are rejecting alternates one and two, those were adders, those were things we were adding to the base bid. Three through nine are things we are subtracting from the base bid, so by awarding three through nine, you are removing from the project.
Thank you.
It is not intuitive.
Well, I, I was very confused, well, I saw in the chart that it was removing because it was in parentheses, but I, then, when it was, yeah, okay, thank you, now I'm with you.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion on Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-six?
Um, I would make a motion to accept, uh, and I would amend the, uh, section two, uh, so that after two twenty-twenty-five, it reads, "Alternatives one through nine are rejected."
Okay, Mr. Koots is, uh, making a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-six with an amendment to section two?
Yep.
Where it would read Contract two dash twenty-twenty-five, Alternatives one through nine are rejected? Is that what it is?
Correct.
Can I ask a question before I second? Um, so does that essentially make it the, uh, recommendation of the staff that, as, as printed?
That's correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Koots and a second by Mr. Waters. Discussion. I'll kick it off, I'm, I'm torn. The hundred and thirty-three thousand or a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, whatever it was, I, I, that, that percentage is, um, concerning to me if that's going to be a consistent percentage increase on projects applying these standards, and that does not include the eleven thousand dollars. So, I do want to make sure that we're aware, if we would adopt it as proposed, we then also have to, I believe, we would also have to allocate eleven thousand dollars for an arborist to oversee this, so that's another cost. So, um, I, I'm supportive of, um, the project, of not going back to redesigning the project, and I feel like there's two important aspects that protect mature trees that are in it, even if Alternatives three through nine are awarded, and that's the, um, storage of equipment not being on terraces or on tree roots, and the, um, the moving the water main in order to try to protect, you know, more of the mature trees. So, I, I am more in favor of what the Public Works Board recommended, and I'd like to see how these play out on future projects, um, before I'm prepared to accept all the tree protection alternative. So, I appreciate the work that the committee has done, but like you said, Drake, I think we have a lot of other things that we have to consider in terms of cost and, and safety, and, um, I'm, I would prefer to stick with the resolution as-is rather than the amendment. Any other discussion?
I have, I just, I have a comment. I am also, um, torn on this subject. I have, um, I struggle with the certainty of any root, um, disruption of having, um, whether the, within any investment, whether it's hand-cut versus machine-cut, trees are living beings, and I think that there's uncertainty in science, knowing that any approach to the disruption is, um, you know, what the outcome's going to be. And so, I am also, I'm struggling on for the money, you know, what, what, there are no guarantees that, um, new approaches or, you know, trying some of these new, um, techniques are going to, um, truly have the outcome we desire, and what's really challenging is, it's not like you have a strong baseline because the tree may have something else that, you know, causes it to, um, to die, and yet, you know, we could blame it on a construction project and it may have something else, but it's hard to do a true-cost analysis. So, um, I'm, I have an interest in understanding, it's like, I don't, I don't feel like we should go back out for a bid, and it's really unfortunate that you can't have a conversation regarding port- parts of alternatives that might give you a bigger bam, bigger bang for the buck or a bigger learning, um, case. And so, um, and I'm still getting my head wrapped around if we reject, if we are accepting or, so if the, um, the current amendment has us removing the nine items of the tree protection, or no, including them.
Keeps them.
Keeps them. I have to go back to the staff because that's the staff recommendation. It keeps them.
By rejecting the alternates three through nine, what for, no, the savings available to the, why the removal of certain, right? Certain, I can't, I was on a roll there. Uh, by rejecting three through nine, you are removing the savings available to you, um, through the elimination of practices and procedures, um, that are intended to maximize the potential of tree retention during the project.
So, then do we have, this is a question possibly also for Eric, do we have a set of observations, questions, um, like things that we are going to, um, take, actually document and learn, like formally, really understand and learn going through this, that will be worth the money we spend? So, when we actually have a formal, we are going to look at these twenty things, and we are going to say we are successful if these twenty-three, three things or twenty things do this, and we will say we are unsuccessful if one of these, all twenty, do that. Do, are we, are we really, do we have a really good pilot plan that goes along with doing the pilot pieces?
Yeah, a lot of that will be in, um, consultation with the cons- the contracted arborist on, um, how observation of those techniques went, how the, um, contractors, um, implemented those changes. You know, there are liquidated damages that are in the contract if they don't comply with them, so certainly, um, if we had six instances where liquidated damages were assessed, that would tell us that there was either a communication fault with the contractor, an enforcement, not an enforcement fault because we would be enforcing it, um, or that, um, something extra needed to be done to, um, ensure that those standards were implemented. There has been, and Eric, maybe you want to go up to the podium, there has been pre-construction, um, inspections of each tree, um, that Eric can kind of speak through what goes through that, and so they will be able to reference that pre-inspection report over time as they monitor the health of those trees. And ultimately, the success or failure, I think, of the pilot program is going to be five years from now, how many of those trees are still standing, um...
But we don't have, we don't have a baseline to say if, in old, the old technique, what percent of the trees still stand when we use the machine? So, we don't really have a baseline, though.
That is correct.
So, we're just...
We...
So, that's, that's the science part of my...
Right, we have not... Yeah, I don't think we have a good, necessarily a strong baseline of data that this tree was not removed during a project, we know its roots were cut mechanically during the replacement of sidewalk, and this tree is still living or is not still living today. I don't know that we could provide that level of analysis to you.
I mean, I would agree too. Uh, our actual diagnostics inspections are still fairly new too, so it's not like we can really go back into past projects either, see what the previous conditions of these trees were on some of the projects that Dwayne was talking about, so we don't necessarily have that data to compare. Some of the other things that at least we have learned already is just completing those prior inspections is really important, and then throughout, kind of like a five-year process, we would complete annual inspections coming out of the dormant season. But then again, there are so many other variables to each of these trees and their conditions, it is difficult to say, but we don't have the cross, um, cross-referencing because we haven't done this on our project before, this would be the first time. I mean, other things that we have learned already is the importance of pre-project pruning and clearance pruning specifically, so I think that's a best management practice that we're going to continue doing regardless if there's tree protection policy adopted or not. So, regardless if this is passed, I mean, we still have learned things, but, um, at least this would provide us a basis to come back on and reference in future projects if it were to be passed. But, very subjective, and it's, it's difficult to judge, when you're saying like survivability rates of some of these trees, that's an almost impossible number to really give. We can give our best guesses, but there's just so many variables to it.
I guess some of the things we might look at down the line is, how's the sidewalk holding up that we hand-poured or hand-removed that was within the tree protection zone? How is the hand-poured curb and gutter holding up? You know, what's the quality of construction? What, i- i- is that failing sooner than we would have anticipated? The infrastructure that we put in place, are there? Are we having tree root infiltration into new, new infrastructure that we might not have had because we directionally bored beneath a tree, um, uh, to preserve it and that resulted in something? I don't know if any of these things might happen, but if those were to happen, then we would incur costs down the line in addition to what we did during the reconstruction project. So, we'd be looking at how our infrastructure is holding up as well as how are the trees holding up that we wanted to preserve, um, as the ultimate success metrics. But we would also be, um, um, I think we would also be working with the arborist to establish that in their observation, how did the consultant fare incorporating these? How often did they have to use X, Y, or Z procedure and how, you know, where, did they appear competent in doing so, or was the arborist constantly having to, you know, bring them back and redo or coach or direct? You know, how, how much did that, how much did that play into it? Because that, that factors into, are we always going to have an arborist con- con- contracted out? Is that going to be an ongoing cost that we're going to incorporate? And, you know, what's the, what's the cost benefit? What has been the benefit of having them there? So, um, I do think there will be metrics we'll be able to look back on to say, um, the success of it, but it is going to be years before we really know. You know, in the immediate aftermath, we'll be able to say, we had no liquidated damages assessed, the arborist observed work within thirty-two tree protection zones and observed no deficiencies and no violations, and believes that the stress placed on the trees was minimized to the greatest extent possible, and their, um, viability going forward is as strong as it could have been done, knowing that they lived through a street reconstruction project. That's the short term. The long term is, did they survive and did our infrastructure hold up?
I want to follow up on that, Mary, because I think that's a really, it's a really good question or, you know, set of questions about how are we going to evaluate how this is working, assuming that this is approved. In fairness to staff, we haven't asked you to develop, you know, an evaluation method for this, we just asked to have this incorporated in three street reconstruction project bids so that we could see what the costs were, but now I think you're identifying more information that we might want to learn if we approve a project, that again, also I think is, you know, it requires more resources from our staff or more, um, that we would want the consulting arborist to do in terms of data collection and reporting and things like that. So, if we do approve it, we're going to want to, you know, learn something from that and, and have certain metrics and, and data to, to get out of it. I think that's a good point. Any other discussion? Greg?
Is there any, uh, replacement trees in this budget?
I'm sorry, what was that question, Greg?
Any replacement trees in this budget?
Replacement trees?
Yeah, for this project.
Street trees generally, talk about your program.
Um, so, street trees are generally replaced within one year following the actual construction. We wait for, uh, soil stabilization, et cetera, but so it would be the spring after project completion or substantial completion. So, trees would be replaced within this project, so we have our basically smallest distances available that we're comfortable and able to plant trees reinstalled after this project completion. So, any trees that were taken down or anything like that would be...
We have a plan for replacement, but we don't, we don't incorporate, um, replacement into the debt because we don't want to borrow for the purchase of the tree.
Okay, I, I guess, my question comes from West Lake Street, that I'm still getting letters from people that are, I think that project was three or four years ago, and they still don't have...
Yeah, I think one piece that gets missed on that one specifically, Dwayne, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there was a significant wait time for We Energies to rehabilit- to, to rehabilitate, um, restore the area of their work, and so we did not proceed with planting of trees until We Energies had completed it. Now, I, I think we, we can always improve and do better on getting them in sooner, but that is part of the reason why that fell off the radar is because a third party that had completed work and had obligations remaining had not completed those obligations.
Thank you.
Any other, um, questions, discussion, comments? Any other, um, questions, discussion, comments? Okay, seeing none. Uh, so we have a motion for Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-six with an amendment. Oops, my screen went dark. Um, with an amendment to section two, uh, that would say alternatives one through nine are rejected. Did I have that correctly? Okay. So can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-six as amended?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quenow?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Motion passes four-one.
Thank you, everyone. Um, and I do want to thank staff. I feel like you've done a very detailed analysis, um, on all of these four projects in terms of looking at the history of contracts and, and the cost and really, you know, diving into what, you know, what we can attribute some of these cost increases to. And unfortunately, I think we're going to see more of that, you know, because there's just seems to be so much uncertainty right now in, in, um, construction costs. So I want to make a special thank you to staff for all your work and, and then analysis to help us make this decision tonight. Um, maybe one clarifying point, um, on the need for a contracted arborist, is that something that is assumed to be necessary based on the vote of the council tonight? And then, um, Drake, you can just take care of that?
Yeah, it gets incorporated into the, uh, Contract for Service through Strand for Contract Administration.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so that's the end of council business for this evening. So are there any recommendations for future agendas from council members?
Madison, Madison Street that we talked about earlier tonight?
Madison Street on the bike lanes. That issue will be coming, coming to us at some point. Uh, next meeting will be all the board appointments. So I'll ask, um, each of you as council members, I'll touch base with you on your, um, preferences for what board you'd like to serve on in the next year. And I'll be bringing forward, um, you know, renewing terms for citizens or whoever, or wherever the vacancies are there. Um, anything else, Drake, that you want to highlight for us?
I think in the interest of time, we can move, move on.
All right, so, uh, now we're going to be convening into closed session as outlined in the agenda. So I need a motion for that.
Motion to convene to closed session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmager. All in favor say, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we are now in closed session and that ends our broadcast for this evening. Thank you.